Recording in progress.
Good evening, colleagues. If you could take your seats. We're going to start off with Council Block leading us into the Fledgeable Legion. Pledgees to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, their God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Good evening, colleagues. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. We are being both audiotaped and videotaped, and we have remotely Counselors Crinsman, Wright, and Gentile. And then we have otherwise almost a full complement this evening. So we're going to go through first call. There is one item on second call. I do not anticipate that's going to be very long, so I think we'll have a fairly quick meeting. We do have a number of items that are going to proceed without a written report because they were approved earlier this evening, but we're going to start off with the Land Use Committee. Chair Kelly, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Land Use Committee met on May 20th, and all of our items were either held or on second call. Do I need to tell you which ones were held?
You do not. That's efficient. Do you have any public hearings?
I do. That I do. I would like to request public hearings for June 17th on page 133, item 179-25, 178-25, and 177... 179-25, 178-25, and 177-25, all on page 133. That's it. Those are my public hearings.
Thank you very much, Chair Kelly. Next.
Wait, hold on. 144-25 on page 123. On page 123.
I'm looking right now. How... Oh, you're right, 144-25. Would you report that out, please?
And then on page 124, there's 476 and 477.
Right. Thank you so much.
Ah, yes. Thank you so much. I did not read ahead in these numbers. Okay, so number 341-24, which was a request to extend nonconforming two-family dwelling... Oh, that's the one that's on second call. Sorry.
It's 144-20-25 on page 123, Counsel Kelly.
Am I looking at the wrong thing?
I think you may be. Page 123.
I'm on page 123.
Third item down.
144-25. Oh, yes, I put the wrong note on this. Correct. This was approved, five-nothing. 144-25, request to amend special permit 315-22 and to allow an oversized secondary sign at 1210-1230 Washington Street was approved, five-zero.
And then you have two items on page 124 that also were approved.
Yes. 476-24, which was a request to allow retaining wall exceeding four feet in height at 52 Kingston Road, which is connected to the next item. That was approved, six-nothing. 477, which is related to the Kingston Road one, is a request to allow... These two retaining walls are connected between these two properties at 166 Plymouth Road, also approved, six-to-one. Sorry about that.
That's quite right, and thank you, Vice Chair Lucas, for bringing that to our attention. Next, do you want me to recognize Vice Chair Oliver? Vice Chair Oliver for the Zoning and Planning Committee, please.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. Zoning and Planning, Matt... Oh, sorry. Bottom of page 124, Zoning and Planning Committee met on 528. All items were held because we are so excited about these three items. We wanted to continue to speak about them. That is the entire report.
All right. Great job for filling in for Chair Baker. Next, I have the Programs and Services Committee. Chair Crinsman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really hard acts to follow, but I'm going to do my best. The committee has not met since our last city council meeting, but at the top of page 127, there is one item that has now been reviewed by Finance, so I'll report that out as well, which is 101-25. This is the authorization to transfer and expend $76,975 for temporary school nursing staff. And back on May 7th, that was approved by Programs and Services by a vote of eight to zero.
Very much. Chair Crinsman. Chair Grossman, Public Safety and Transportation, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to ask for a suspension of the rules to vote on item 112-25, which is the appropriation of $90,000 for a new plow truck for the Newton Fire Department. And that is an item for which there is no written report.
All in favor of suspension of rules to allow? Chair Grossman, report that out, please. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. So I already stated what the item is. We met before this meeting tonight at 7:15, and we approved the item. Seven in favor, one recused.
Thank you very much. Next, for Public Facilities, Chair Albright, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two meetings, one joint with the Zoning and Planning Committee, and that was on May 28th, and those items were all held. And then I also need a suspension of the rules to report out a report on a meeting we just held before this meeting, for which I have no written report.
Would you just read the docket items for what you're requesting is a suspension? Just the numbers, please.
104-25, 117-25, 118-25, 110-25, 119-25, 102-25, 105-25, and 123-25, which has now been split into two, and it has a 123-25, perance two.
Thank you. All in favor of suspending the rules to allow Chair Albright to report those out without a written report? Please say aye. Aye opposed? Go ahead, please.
Okay. 104-25 is Toronto, the mayor requesting $4,500,000 for the city's transportation improvement program, which would be $3 million from free cash and $1.5 million from the snow and ice reserves within the Comptroller's budget. That was approved, seven-zero. 117-25 is for two rectangular rapid flashing beacons, which would be also from free cash. That was approved, seven-zero. Appropriation of $100,000 for the Rumford Avenue Resource Recovery Center. That was approved, seven-zero. 110-25, appropriation of $150,000 for the City Hall Boiler Condensate Tank, approved, seven-zero. Sorry. 119-25, appropriation of $100,000 for inspectional services HVAC improvements for the second floor of City Hall. This was approved, seven-zero. This is from FY25 Budget Reserve. 102-25, $250,000 for the Police Headquarters improvements. This was from 2024 for certified free cash. Approved, seven-zero. 105-25, appropriation of $75,000 for the Newton Center Tree Lighting Project from 2024 Certified Free Cash. That was approved, seven-zero. And the final item, which is 123-25 and 123-25-two. So 123-25 is $1,425,000, approved, eight-zero, and this was from free cash for some of it is for purpose of completing a list of priority school facility projects throughout the district. And the second item, the perance two, is $1.1 million out of certified free cash for the purpose of completing specialized specified school facility projects typically funded out of the Newton School Charter Maintenance Account. So these funds will be placed in an account under the control of Public Buildings Department, and that was approved, eight-zero. And that concludes the report.
All right. Thank you, Chair Albright. I'm going to ask Vice Chair Malachi to give the report for Finance. Just as a heads up, Vice Chair Malachi's going to report out all of the items that Finance has voted on, but there are two which are still waiting approval from the substantive committee. Our clerk is going to note that before we vote on first call, but we've got it easier just to report everything out together. So go ahead, Vice Chair Malachi.
I'm going to read what's in the report, but I think the two that you referred to might have been deleted already from this, but anyway.
Could you speak into the microphone a little bit more? Thank you.
Right. Be prepared for a long report. The report begins on page 127. We met on May 27th. First item, 101-25, authorization to transfer and expend $76,975 for temporary school nursing staff. We approved, seven-to-zero. Number 102-25, appropriation of $250,000 for the Police Headquarters improvements out of certified free cash. Finance approved, seven-to-zero. Number 104-25, appropriation of $4,500,000 to support the city's transportation network improvement program. That was $3 million from certified free cash and $1.5 million transferred from the snow and ice reserves. Finance approved, seven-to-zero. Number 105-25, appropriation of $75,000 for the Newton Center Tree Lighting Project. Finance approved, six-to-one. Myself opposed. Number 110-25, $150,000 for City Hall Boiler Condensate Tank from the FY25 Budget Reserve. Finance approved, seven-to-zero. Number 112-25, appropriation of $90,000 for a new plow truck for the Newton Fire Department. That's the one they use to clear the stations from certified free cash. We approved, seven-to-zero. Number 115-25, appropriation of $160,000 for the City Hall Elevator Modernization Project from the FY25 Budget Reserve. It was approved, seven-to-zero. Number 116-25, appropriation of $40,000 to repair the fountain located within the Traffic Island at the Chestnut Street and Highland Street intersection. We approved as amended, adding the words, source of funds, June 30th, 2024 Certified Free Cash. We approved, seven-to-zero. Number 117-25, appropriation of $43,100 for rectangular rapid flashing beacons, approved, seven-to-zero. Number 118-25, appropriation of $100,000 for the Rumford Avenue Resource Recovery Center. That's the second trailer. Finance approved, seven-to-zero. Number 119-25, appropriation of $100,000 for inspectional service HVAC improvements from the FY25 Budget Reserve. Approved, six-zero-one. Counselor Grossman abstaining. Number 120-25, appropriation of $150,000 for fire station number one and number two living quarters improvements from certified free cash. Approved, seven-to-zero. Number 121-25, appropriation of $50,000 for Jeanette West Recreation Center restroom improvements from certified free cash. Approved, seven-to-zero. Number 122-25, appropriation of $150,000 for library data wiring from certified free cash. Finance approved, seven-to-zero. And actually, that is one that I think Programs and Services will get back to. Number 123-25, appropriation of $2,525,000 for priority school facility improvements. Finance approved, seven-to-zero as amended, changing $2,525,000 to $1,425,000. And adding, these funds shall be placed in an account under the control of the Public Buildings Department. Okay. Number 123-25, perance two, appropriation of $1,100,000 for one-time school facility projects typically funded out of the Newton Public Schools Charter Maintenance Account. We approved, seven-to-zero. Number 147-25, appointment of Rajiv Parlikar to the Horace Cousins Industrial Fund, approved, seven-to-zero. Number 149-25, accept and expend the sum of $25,000 to upgrade and develop the exhibits at Historic Newton. That is a state budget earmark, and we approved, seven-to-zero. Number 150-25, appropriate and expend the sum of $50,000 for sidewalk construction. That's up on Lowell Ave. We approved, seven-to-zero. That's Trio Mitigation Funds. Number 151-25, expand the sum of $10,000 for a legal settlement. Approved, seven-to-zero. Number 152-25, accept and expand a grant of $423,000... $423,052.50 for a part of the local bottleneck reduction program. That's a state MassDOT grant. Approved, seven-to-zero. Number 98-25, appropriation of $225,576 for prevailing wage rate adjustment. That's for the solid waste contract. From certified free cash, we approved, seven-to-zero. And 99-25, accept and expend a grant of $13,500 from National Environmental Health Association. Approved, seven-to-zero.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Malachi. An extensive list of projects this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I don't know if my colleagues in Ward Two were aware, but 150-25, which is a sidewalk, buy $50,000 for sidewalk from the Trio Mitigation Fund. I don't think that ever came to us for discussion. So I think I'd like to put that on second call.
I'm sorry. You're talking 150-25?
Yes.
You're putting that on second call?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So for real property reuse, Chair Danberg.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's no report, but I want the committee to know, the Real Property Reuse Committee to know, that there will be a meeting on Thursday, June 12th. The JPG Advisory Committee has completed its report and plans to submit the report and discuss it at the meeting on June 12th. It's going to be at 7:30 instead of the normal 7 o'clock because there is a Newton South graduation that day.
Great. Thank you, Chair Danberg. All right. With that, we have two items now on second call, the one that Counselor Malachi had placed and the one that Counselor Albright just placed on second call. So Madam Acting Clerk, will you call the roll, please, on all the remaining items? And just note for the record which ones we're not voting on tonight.
Yes. So the items that we are not voting on tonight are 106-25 and 122-25. They were voted out of Finance, but still need to be voted out of Programs and Services. Now I can call the roll on first call.
Go ahead, please.
Counselor Albright?
Aye.
Counselor Baker?
Aye.
Counselor Bigsby?
Aye.
Counselor Block?
Aye.
Counselor Danberg?
Aye.
Counselor Downs?
I accept for 105-25 on page 127, on which I vote no.
I booed. Go ahead, please.
Counselor Farrell?
I accept for item 105-25 on page 127, on which I vote no.
It was item 125-25.
That's correct.
Counselor Gentile?
Aye.
Counselor?
Counselor Getz?
Aye.
Counselor Greenberg?
Aye.
Counselor Grossman?
Aye.
Counselor Humphrey?
Aye.
Counselor Kalas?
Aye.
Counselor Kelly?
Aye.
Counselor Crinsman?
Aye.
Counselor Leary?
Aye.
Counselor Lipoff?
Aye.
Counselor Lobovitz?
Aye.
Counselor Lucas?
Aye.
Counselor Malachi?
I accept for number 105-25, on which I vote no.
Counselor Mickley? Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Counselor Wright? Counselor Wright? President Laredo?
I with the exception of 144-25, for which I'm recused.
So first call was passed, 22 yeas, two absent, with the exception of item 125-25, which was passed with 20 yeas, two nays, and two absent, and with the exception of 105-25. With 21 yeas, two absent, 24 yeas, two absent, and one nay, and with the exception of item 144-25, with 21 yeas, two absent, and one recusal.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I have to recuse myself from item 112-25.
All right. We'll note the recusal from that item. Thank you, Counselor Block. Counselor Farrell?
Could you please restate the count, particularly relating to item 105-25?
Well, I'll ask the acting clerk to do that.
Thank you.
105-25, Ms. Flynn?
So for 105-25, there was 21 yeas, two absent, and one opposed.
I don't think that was correct. I think there were three opposed to that.
There were 125-25, but it's 105-25.
Let's go through that again, just so we're clear. 105-25, could you read the vote on that, please?
So if it was 105-25, then there'll be three no... three nays, two absent, 19 yeas.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Farrell. All right. Any other questions on the results of first call? Seeing none, Counselor Kelly, there's one item from Land Use on second call. Are you going to ask Vice Chair Lucas to handle that?
I am going to ask Vice Chair Lucas to handle that because I am recused on this item tonight.
All right. So you can just step outside the rail, but don't go far because we have the other item right after that. Vice Chair Lucas, would you just give a brief report on this item, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 341-24 is on second call. This is... Let me just read it into the record. Request to extend nonconforming two-family dwelling use to extend the nonconforming front setback and to allow a three-story structure at 5254 Hatfield Road. So the project at 5254 Hatfield Road in Ward Three West Newton was first presented to the Land Use Committee on September 17th, 2024. At present, there is a two-family home in the SR3 zoning district. I do want to read what Planning wrote in one of the memos, the first memo. Planning states the following. Per Section 3.1.2.8.3, where a density or dimensional control is not set forth for use granted by special permit, the most restrictive density or dimensional control applicable to such use in any district where the use is allowed by right shall be applicable unless otherwise required in the special permit. Two-family dwellings are allowed by right in the MR1 zoning district with the most restrictive dimensional controls prescribed for a post-1953 new lot. The dimensional controls for a new MR1 lot are applied. The petitioner would like to further extend the nonconforming two-family use, extend the nonconforming front setback, and to build a third story. At the September 17th meeting, the petitioner initially sought to raise the roof and construct additional living space above the second story, therefore creating a full third story with a rear deck, add a single-car detached garage with storage space above, enclose the rear porch, and construct a covered front porch, and add a second curb cut to the site to create additional parking. The Land Use Committee held this item but kept the public hearing open. At the second meeting on December 17th, the petitioner submitted a revised plan in which he eliminated the second curb cut, lowered the building by 18 inches. The petitioner improved the rear screening with a green privacy wall for the deck on the third floor. Again, the Land Use Committee held the item, and the public hearing remained open. At the third meeting on May 20th, the petitioner submitted a revised plan for the conversion of the proposed third-floor balcony to living space and the reduction in height for the proposed garage. The relief being sought has remained the same throughout the special permit process. Extend the nonconforming two-family use in the SR3 zone, extend the nonconforming front setback, and to build a third story. The project was approved on May 20th with five yes votes and two abstentions. That is the report, and at this time, I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, please, Counsel Lucas, to make a motion.
So at this time, I would like to refer this item back to Land Use. The reason for this is we've received a lot of emails today, and we've received an email from the petitioner or someone who represents the petitioner. And there are still many questions about this project that need to be discussed in committee. So with that, I would like to move this back to committee. Thank you.
There's been a motion by Vice Chair Lucas, seconded by Counsel Lobovitz. I'm going to see if we can do this in a voice vote. All right. So all in favor of sending this back to committee, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. It goes back to committee, and Vice Chair Lucas will lead the deliberation. All right. It goes back to committee, and Vice Chair Lucas will lead the deliberations when it goes back there. So that disposes of our first item. Chair Albright, Counselor Albright, you placed the second item on second call. I think it was already read out by Finance as a report, so if you want to speak to it, please.
I, I would just, as, as I don't think this was brought to the three Ward Two counselors to discuss it. I just would like to postpone this to a date certain so we can find out more about it.
So Counselor Albright has requested postponement to a date certain, which would be June 16th, our next scheduled meeting, in order to have some further time for the Ward Two counselors to inquire. Vice Chair Malachi, do you wish to be heard on that?
Just if I could add a little information, during Finance Committee, as we discussed it, I did ask, and I, we were led to believe that the Ward Two counselors had been consulted. It, the, the purpose is to put in, I believe it's 150, 150 feet of sidewalk north of Page Road, between Page Road and the intersection with Walnut Street, where there currently is no sidewalk. And when I asked about, are any trees going to be removed? They said no, and they, it sounded like they had already started the work. So that's, that's what I know.
So there's still a motion pending by Counselor Albright. Do I have a second? I want to get a second first, and then I'll let you speak to it. Second for the motion? You can speak to the motion now, Counselor Lucas.
Yes, Counselor Albright is correct. We, the administration has not consulted with the Ward Two counselors on this expenditure of Trio mitigation monies. And I just want to say for the record, the construction is underway for the new sidewalks. So I don't know how they're able to do the sidewalks before we can approve the funding, but I will certainly vote in favor of Counselor Albright's motion.
Okay. So there's a motion, there's a second. I have Counselor Gentile, and then Counselor Downs.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to repeat what the Vice Chair Counsel Malachi said, that we were in Finance under the impression that the Ward Two counselors were aware of the work and were supportive. So I, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, we, we were not concerned about the local counselors. So, and I was going to make the very suggestion that Counselor Albright was to postpone it to the next meeting so they could get some additional information. So I certainly plan on supporting the motion.
Thank you.
But no, no slight intended on, on the part of the Finance Committee.
Counselor Downs?
Thank you, and I'll be brief. But there is a history to this particular non-sidewalk. This was something that day middle school students brought to our attention as a critical gap in the pedestrian network and a safety issue as they're walking back along Walnut Street and down Lowell on the west side of the street, west and south side of the street. And while I think it's a perfectly appropriate use of city money or trio money, I understand there's a process to be followed here. I just want our, my colleagues to know that this is a really important piece of work, and it will be welcomed by the now Newton North High School students who are using that sidewalk.
Thank you, Counselor Downs. Anyone else wish to be heard in the motion to postpone to a date certain? All right, seeing none, we're going to do this on a voice vote. All in favor of postponing to June 16th, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. That passes. That concludes our business at 8:19 PM. Thank you all very much. Good evening.